That's always good to be like, we have something to say at least, break your damn table.
Yeah.
Somebody open it to me.
Hide behind the keyboard. See, I said, okay, I know the best. I tagged every comment that wasn't tied as well. I'm supposed to give him a personal phone call. Next year, I'm gonna make a post at another six three three.
Bill, are we good? gallons of water on the plants today.
Yeah.
The two pots. So somebody has not watered them for days because I could lift them up with like four fingers.
Oh geez, okay, yeah.
Sex there in Reed Field, man. Please join me in flat.
It is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, made of liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, Catherine.
It's okay, I can finish it after you.
Good evening. Thank you for joining our regularly scheduled select board meeting. First on our agenda is the minutes from our meeting on July 21st, 26 011.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I motion a second and discussion.
They were excellent. One more time.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. And just to be make mention that Rebecca is excused for this evening. Twenty six zero one two, the warrants five and six.
So let's see if I can do this. I looked at these earlier today. Items of note, we paid our annual dues to the Cobbsey watershed district. That was 10,119. We bought a bunch of postage for 1,087.
Was that, was that for tax bills?
No, that's just to refill the machine.
Oh, okay.
I don't know how often they do that. The hazardous, household hazardous waste collection day cost us 38 7450. That's 3,800. I think only like 400 of that was our share of the fee and the remaining part, it was like 3,400, $3,500 was like 2,000 less than last year, even though the price per unit went up, we had way less stuff brought from Reedfield. So maybe it's actually working. We paid 3,267 dollars for more engineering on the sidewalk project. We bought more postage for $2,000. Why was there another one?
So one was.
1087 was for the tax bills.
Correct.
Creative digital. 2,000 was to fill the machine. Motor vehicle fees were a lot this month. They were like, that includes boats and RVs and so on. And it was over $15,000. That's all the items of note. Oh, so I should give us the total amount. So sorry. Go ahead, Dave.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants five and six for the sum of 70,523.64 cents.
Second.
I have motion a second for discussion. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Next up, we have select board communications. Any member of the board have anything they wish to say?
Just that Jen killed it. She did a great job this weekend with Heritage Days.
I agree.
Went really well. Had a wonderful weather for it. Thanks again.
However, you figured the weather out. That was really great. Yeah. But, yeah. It was nice to, it was nice to see so many people talking about it. I missed the first day, but we've had some fun yesterday. So that was good.
It was really cool having it over three days. I wasn't sure how that was gonna work and I, I don't think any of us were. But the puppet show went really well and I assume people came to the movie and that's nice. And you know, that was probably the only thing that was really appealing to little teeny tiny kids. So it was nice that it was on a different day for them and their parents.
I also just wanted to say it was, it's really nice to listen to 94.5 Reeffield FM. I've been tuning into that and hearing some great call signs. Eric, I heard yours this morning.
All right.
Yeah. So if you're interested, please make sure you participate and help them with that too.
So on that, so we're actually broadcasting live.
Yeah.
On 94.5 FM right now.
The select board meetings.
Select board meetings live.
Well, hello there, radio.
In addition to live on YouTube and live on, you know, Zoom. So we have so multiple outreach options now. So it's, it's.
Excellent. Yeah, great.
Well, now if we can just get the county to actually do something, we'll be all set. Still need to do that with you.
We do, we do.
The next thing on here is just let you all know about our select board retreat, which we held two weeks ago. On, yeah. The 23rd. Really good discussion, really kind of nice to reflect on the goals we had from last year's retreat and that we felt that we had either accomplished what they were and that we had a few more that we could continue working on. So we'll see that we want to finish the projects that we do have going in town and just kind of support Eric and the team here to, to get those all complete. And nothing of crazy note that we wanted to start really thinking about next play contract, finishing the ball fields, the sidewalk, talk about what we need to do at the transfer station for salt sand shed. Anything I'm missing?
Little bit of preliminary work on the beach project.
Some.
To get it rolling for the next year.
Yeah. So kind of similar to what Dave and I did when we were talking about having a community programmer going around and talking to the different committees about what, what might we need at the beach? So we're gonna do that road show again this year. All right, staff communication. Eric?
Sure. I'll just start and run through it as quickly as I can. Some of vacations have thinned out staffing at the office, but the workload has been manageable. Everybody's been kind of pulling their, their weight in a little bit extra as people kind of rotate out over the course of the summer. So that's been great to see. Same thing with all the other facilities. Folks have, you know, transfer station, as you know, has been thin. We're still struggling to fill those, that position. We did four interviews last week. We're gonna have two more tomorrow. We really are putting a lot of energy into it, but just not there yet. But if anybody has an interest, we are still accepting applications for that position. I do want to thank the board members and staff who attended the summer residence meeting. Sorry I missed it, but I heard that it was a good event and that, you know, just kind of standard, standard feedback from the residents. So we might be picking up some of those issues over the course of the year, but it sounds like, yeah, we're doing generally the right things for them. We've had a few general assistance requests in the past few weeks. It's a bit unusual for this time of year, but sometimes you just have fits and starts when you've got small numbers. It doesn't take more than a couple to really throw everything out of, you know, perception, out of whack anyway. So, but we've been able to help in a few cases and a few cases we haven't. I've had a way in a few land use issues recently, one involving the planning board and one involving CEO decisions. I'm happy to continue with that, but I just want the board to know that it does, you know, have an impact on what, you know, to do that. But if I can contribute something, I'll try to do that. And I think that I've been able to do that in these cases. I'm working on renewing and replacing our current voiceover IP system. That's our digital telephone at the office. Angelica is going to be helping out with that later in the week with a prospective installer. Let's see. Oh, the idea there is that we would connect the library, town office, transfer station, all on a single phone networks we can actually have. We can direct calls more appropriately and just have a better managed system. But that's, that's still a ways off. Right now, we're just focusing on getting the town office squared away again. We've had a few billing issues with different software vendors lately as we use more of these services. You know, I just need to adapt. Our staff needs to adapt and be more aware of the little things that come up in the billing. And Jaren, you've dealt with software solutions and all that for a long time and you probably know that sometimes things come up and they're not always readily apparent what's going on. So we just have to, you know, be diligent as administrators and keeping an eye on those accounts. Now, we had something happen with Adobe and something happened with a different vendor where they just wanted to charge us a bunch of money. And I said, what is this? It's tough because it really does keep you on your toes, but I worry about the consequences because these aren't small charges. We had a $500 charge from our credit card company for equipment fee and I said, it just kind of snuck it right in there. But anyway, we, we caught it and reversed it. But yeah, that's been, that's been interesting. New dynamic now that we're dealing with more of those types of vendors and less the local ones. We're almost finished with the federal WCF process for the fairgrounds project. We have had some questions from the National Park Service that we're trying to respond to, particularly around the role of the National Guard in helping to offset some of those costs. So we're doing our very best to get the positive outcome we've been looking for. You know, who knows? I think we'll, we'll have a much better idea in about two or three weeks, once they've had a chance, the park service folks and the National Guard Service folks to actually talk about the work that's going to be done. And whether that's an appropriate matching component, but I, I think it is. I think it's going to hold true, but I just want to give you awareness that we're in the final stretches of that and there's still a little bit of chatter. We mentioned the interviews for the transfer station. I'm working on wage rates for municipal staff as we prepare for contract negotiations. We'll talk about that later tonight. The roof replacement at the swap shop and Bobcat building at the transfer station is complete. That came out very good, as did the striping that was done townwide. Lucas Strapping did that for us and as always, we're very, very good to work with and good results. I've met twice with Dave Moore to discuss the prospect of a comprehensive HVAC system at the town office. It's gonna be a little bit complicated, but we're continuing to, to look at that. And that was something else that came out of that select board retreat. I think was the idea that we wanted to continue to work on that and do some stopgap measures in addition to longer term fixes. So I am pursuing that. And then the contract extension is in place for winter road maintenance. That's with Scott Horn. I expect a roughly 2% increase. I can't guarantee that. We basically tie it to inflation and, and that's, it's hard to tell what's gonna happen. It's through the end of September, so it's not far off. And we've got 10 months of data already. So I think that 2% looks about right. And Scott's fine with it. So.
That's a good low rate.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Yep, yep. It's tied to transportation sector. So stability and fuel prices has actually helped that quite a bit. And then I'll be at the MTC, MTCMA conference, August 13th through 15th. But as always, I'll be available. I'll have my phone and email and I will get you some information, Catherine, for the meeting and I will try to zoom in, but I can't make any promises. It'll, you know, be a little bit further away because that is the 13th, right? The solid waste.
Year.
Yep, so.
Does that mean I have to figure out how to do Zoom?
Maybe, maybe. I'm looking at Angelica, but maybe. If you're.
Well, we might be the only committee that always tries to do it at least. So.
Which is very much appreciated.
If we actually miss one, it's okay.
Yeah, Catherine, if you want to come by tomorrow, I can show you how to do it in two minutes. So. Yeah.
It's at 5:30. So you'll still be here. Okay, we'll just do that.
So moving on, I'll just go through the treasurer's report unless you had anything on the town manager.
Nope.
Good to go. But I'm gonna talk a bit about Jen when we get to the other part of this because she's done a great job and I want to say that too. But financially, everything is on track for the first month of the year. All of our new budget numbers are in place. The audit, again, we're, we're working to get data together, information together for the auditors. That's continued. Teresa just submitted that full packet of, you know, first tier audit materials last week. Again, we're only in the first month of the year, so we do expect about 8%, but we have variation upwards of 20 plus percent expended for some of our, our lines because the summer months are the busiest months for certain departments. It's just like the winter months are busier for, for the roads because of the heavy expenses for, for, you know, the contract. But in any event, we do have some things to note. One is that our account balances are, they look relatively low. I mean, it's dramatic difference one year to the next, 85% less than last year, but we still have over a quarter million dollars or approximately quarter million dollars in the bank. And that doesn't include money that's kind of sitting inside accounts there. That's just our primary checking. So I just wanted to point that out and say it might look a little bit scary, but it's really, it's intentional and we know that we have very stable cash floor, right? So no, no worries there. July and January are our two leanest months and so we're reporting on July. So it's, it's very much expected. But all that money that's out there now is doing work for us and we're getting some return on it. So that's, that's good. Real estate payments are very near expected levels for the month. Transport station fees are up for the month compared to last year and motor vehicle revenues are up for the month as well. So things are looking, looking pretty good. Total receipts are down slightly for the month, but, but only a small percentage. And so you don't see the year to date because the month and the year to date are the same in July. And again, in the, in the last column, we've got the budget values versus actual, and those are the new budget numbers. So that's my treasurer's report.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions for Eric?
All looks good. Appreciate that anyone who wants to can look at all this information and know how we're spending their money.
And if they don't get it, they can ask me or Teresa and we'll help, help explain it. So yeah, there's a lot there.
All right. Next on our agenda for communication is community services report. Melissa for the library.
We've got Elaine too. Can I ask Elaine to maybe come up first? Just to, sorry, Melissa. I don't want to over, overstep, but.
Feel like you just did.
Elaine made a special request, so I want to accommodate it.
See me?
Yes.
So on behalf of the age friendly committee, thank you for the invite. And of course, I'm sure you're aware that just about everything we do has to do with community engagement, education, involvement. So just to remind people of some of our very popular activities, we have the cafe, right? The Miranda Cook Cafe, which is extremely popular. All through the school year, we've had very consistent attendance, averaging at least 12 people. Not only Reedfield residents, but we're making friends with people from Manchester, Fayette. So it is a very, very popular and appreciated activity that goes on every Thursday from about 9:30 to 11 at the middle school. Now, I will say the success of that program depends on the cooperation between the people from age friendly and we do have kind of like a core subcommittee of individuals that do the programming, the arranging and things like that. But there has to be somebody to work with on the school side. Because the beauty of that program is the involvement with the middle school students. So up until now, it's really been great. We've been working with Dan Holman, but he retired, and then Rick Saroy. So we are just hoping that with the changes that are going on, we can get the cafe going, you know, starting on time and smoothly because we need the interface with the teachers who are willing to bring their classes to the cafe. All right, the next project, of course, where we got some nice feedback was the winter emergency kits and the air conditioning loan program. And so we still have a few kits to go. Out of the 25, we have distributed 17. And as part of concluding that grant, I will be following up and calling the people who did get the kits and asking them if they ever used part of it. Well, now that we have a radio station, we can share that information with them because they'll appreciate that working with their, their little solar and crank radios. So I anticipate that we'll continue doing some workshops probably in November about the winter preparedness kits, not only for people to get one, but also for general education. I did have several people reach out to me. They just wanted to know what the items were that were in these kits so that they could buy them for themselves, which I thought was excellent feedback. All right, the next program, of course, is Neighbors Driving Neighbors. It's a very, very valuable program. We know that Reed Field residents are taking advantage of it in terms of requesting rides. And hopefully, as time goes on and people understand what it means to be a driver, that it isn't a huge time commitment. The commitment is really just to maybe, if you can, do one ride a month. If we have enough drivers, we can really spread out the requests and keep that program going. Of course, Reed Field U is extraordinarily popular. And I have to say, it's been several years now that we have been going to the statewide conference of lifelong living and nobody has, nobody in the state is doing what we accomplish with Reed Field U. And of course, this year, it has been enormously, enormously helpful for Jen to be working on that with us. It was a major project. And with technical limitations that we've had in the past. So hopefully, as we go forward, registration becomes smooth. And it's just a joy to go out there and find presenters who are willing to volunteer their time and their expertise. So we're excited about getting that going, and we always start working on that in December. I mean, it doesn't happen until March, but we start working on it in December. And then finally, the handy helpers, okay? We talk about the handy helper part of the program a lot. And what we've come to realize is that we do have a dedicated core of handy helpers who pitch in when we need to, but we need more. And we also need some younger handy helpers. Because lots of times, the reality is that we get requests that some of our older handy helpers really would like to, to be able to accommodate, but really shouldn't. So that's going to be an important focus. We need not only more volunteers, but also younger volunteers. And so in talking about that, that's where we came up with the idea of putting together, once again, with Jen's help, a volunteer fair that we hope to make happen on October 11th in the afternoon at the elementary school. And of course, being involved in several different committees. It seems as though all the town committees need more volunteers. So we are really hoping that all of the committees will have a table. I mean, this is unique in that, you know, it's not a fun, fun fair so much as it is having tables of information where different committees can present the projects that they are doing and the need for volunteers all the way around the town. So that's what we're hoping we can pull together for October.
Thank you.
So other questions? All right, and we are excited that we actually will have three new members that will be working. So that will be very, very helpful.
Great report. Thank you.
Thanks, Elaine. Okay, Melissa, we really made it this time. I was just getting Jen go further.
And yes, you can certainly leave. It's no problem.
Hi, everybody. Melissa Small, library director at Reedfield Community Library. So I'm happy to be here to provide this quarterly update. A few program updates since I last saw you in April. I, I hate to not, I hate to just pass over our regular programs because they're really important. Our special events are always great, but we continue our weekly story time on Tuesday mornings at 10. That grows in the summer. We're down at the beach, which is a wonderful place to host that event. And I always want to thank Pam Mitchell and Pat Clark for their help with this program. And we have a lot of young adult volunteers who help with crafts for the kids. We have a monthly book group for adults. Our craft groups continue to expand. I want to thank Lynn Mosher for really spearheading that effort. This is the first year we've continued those. We have two, one that meets twice a month, one that meets every week. And those, this is the first summer we've continued through the summer. And so that's been nice. Some summer residents have been able to come. I just left. They have sunset stitches tonight. And we had a family who came for the first time. They had a teen and a child, so some kids have been able to come. And the older adults who come regularly are really so helpful with those younger children learning to crochet or nap, which is so exciting. We took a cookbook club break for the summer. That will resume meeting in the fall. One-on-one tech help monthly continues. Jaren has been absolutely fabulous. We have one to two people per month taking advantage of that service. And they have, no question can stump Jaren. I'll say that. He's, he's really great, so. And actually, after you left today, Jaren, the person who took advantage of his expertise today, came up and said, she said she thanked you several times, but she said to me, he was so helpful. It was really great. So, so thank you for offering that on a monthly basis. We did have to pause our National Digital Equity Center tech classes, which we were offering monthly. There have been some interruptions on their end with federal funding, so those are on hold for the time being. Some informational and educational programming. Every year, we do Fix a Bike Workshop, which is a bike maintenance workshop with the Bicycle Coalition of Maine. We do that in conjunction with Dr. Shaw Library in, in Mount Vernon, and that's always fabulous and well attended. We offer cloud library workshops to teach people how to use their free app for eBooks and audiobooks, and we do that throughout the year. Some special events that we've had in the last few months since April. So we have a National Library Week open house. We had our sixth annual poetry stroll where we get a few new poetry submissions from all different ages of people, and we add them to our story walk in April, and then we do the event together. It's really wonderful. We've had several board game and pizza nights in May. We did that on some Friday nights. We had with local artist Cassie Sano, we did a kid story walk and art workshop that was summer. Also RJ Jenkins, who's a teacher, artist and illustrator up at Kenshill. He did a fabulous paint workshop this summer for kids and teens. We had during July, which is Lake's Appreciation Month, we had a display. We partner with some of the local lake associations and they send on some brochures and maps and things. And we hang that in our front entryway along with some books about lakes, highlighting Lakes Appreciation Month in July. And we have Tom Maloki and Rick Wilson who come and do a fabulous lake-themed story time with our kids at, at the beach. Justine Fontes, formerly of the post office. She had her annual Mouseversary event with her helpers for kids at the library. And she also comes now on Saturday mornings to make music and stories with any interested kids. She's there from 10 to 12. Karen Richards Toothaker, who's a Winthrop artist, excuse me, Winthrop author, came and did a fabulous intergenerational no-so ragdoll event. I didn't know you could make a ragdoll the way she did, but it was fabulous. And we had grandparents, kids and, and, and parents there. And it was really, really wonderful. And she has a book called The Rag Doll Gift she read in conjunction with that. And most recently, we had our, as part of Heritage Days, which was fabulous. We had our annual book sale, which the Friends of the Library heads up. And we made our most, it was our biggest sale yet. We made about $2,800, which was really fabulous, which was, I think, about $800 more than last year, which was great. And then yesterday, we had Frog Town Mountain Puppetiers come. A local family made a very generous donation to bring them back to town this year. Kenshill School was absolutely amazing in allowing us to use their Bodman Performing Arts Space, which was fabulous yesterday. And we hosted the show in memory of longtime library volunteer Woody Tarbuck, who last year in this very room enjoyed with a great twinkle in his eye, the puppets, the pirate puppet show. And we miss you, Woody, but we, we were thinking of you, so. Summer reading has been fabulous this year. Thirty-five adults and 82 kids and teens are participating. We kicked off with Make Your Own Sundays and lawn games at the beginning of the summer. And we are ending next Monday with our final celebration with Chawonki Natural Traveling Natural History Program on predators. And they'll have live animals. We've had a bunch of summer author events for adults. They have been really great. We've been able to be outside in our fantastic outdoor space, which people really enjoy. A couple of partnerships I want to highlight. With the gallery and Kami Davidson, we did a tiny art show and a Van Gogh art workshop. We've partnered with Trails in June for National Trails Day. They came to the library and had a table. They also were at the book sale with a table. They got tons of interest at the book sale, lots of questions. The Historical Society, thanks to Bob and Jeannie Harris. We did a olden days schoolhouse event for kids earlier this summer, and that was wonderful. Nancy Pord was our school teacher, and it was really a great event. We also, this is new, starting in June, we partner with Spectrum Generations. Anna Keely is an Aging and Disability Resource Counselor, and she comes every third Tuesday to the library to be there for the afternoon to meet with anybody who would like to talk to her about services, resources in the area. She'll help people fill out applications. This is for adults over 60 or adults of any age with disabilities. And we've had some artwork hanging in the library, Gloria Hewitt and Jamali Basak over the last few months. And lastly, a partnership that has been so fun is with Jen. You'll probably talk about this too, Jen, but with Reedfield Ref, we did our first ever Family Fun Carnival. Jen and I thought we might have 20 people come, and we had about 120 people. So it was fabulous. It was down at the beach a Friday night, super fun, easy, low cost and just joyous, like really fun for the families. And we also, together, we did at the library a bingo and pizza night also on a summer Friday, and that was super fun, too. We'll be at the school at the end of the month, Reedfield Elementary School, to sign people up for library cards, to hand out free books and answer questions about the library. And then the last thing I want to share is just that I told you about the grant that we got for $10,000 from the American Library Association for a program called Libraries Transforming Communities, an accessible small and rural communities grant. And that money has already come in. We haven't spent anything yet. We are hosting a community conversation actually this Thursday at the library at 6:30. And that is for anybody to come and talk about what they think about improving accessibility of our library facilities. The, this grant specifically was targeted for improving facilities with regards to better accessibility for residents with mobility disabilities. But we want to hear about anything that people want to share. So please, if you have interest in discussing that, please come to the event, either in person. We'll also have a Zoom option. This is all on Facebook, Instagram. It's in the library newsletter. And if you can't make it or don't want to make it or prefer to talk to me personally and privately, we can have a one-on-one conversation. So I invite you to call the library. You can set a time up to meet in person or talk by phone if you have suggestions and ideas. Love to hear them. So, any questions?
Wow.
That was so thorough. How could it be?
Thank you.
Thank you. Relationship that Jen is building, this is for you as well, but with lots of different groups in town is really paying off. And I think that's why we wanted that position to become fruitful. But it's awesome that you guys are planning things and getting much bigger responses than you hoped for. That's just amazing.
Super fun, yeah.
So, obviously, it's the enthusiasm you both bring to it, I think, that makes it happen, so.
That's good. Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa.
All right, Jen, it's your turn.
My turn?
Yeah.
Top that.
Okay, I am going to talk about a lot of the programming we've been doing in the past couple of months, but I'll start with Heritage Days since we're just fresh from it. Some things that we added, that's the most that I wrote in our summary because we have our annual things and those are fantastic, but I wanted to highlight the things that we added this year and talk about their success because I was very nervous about adding something, adding things to something that was already successful and great. But they all had a really great turnout. Eric had a fantastic idea with putting the brochure in the tax bill. So many people gave me credit for that, and I just said, "Thank you." I'll acknowledge that that was Eric's idea and people loved it. So we definitely need to continue that in the future. Inflatables were a big hit with the kids. Before my first, well, my very first Heritage Days committee meeting, I wanted criticism on what, what, what people wanted to change, what they wanted more of, and what people wanted were more kids' things at the Maker's Market. So we got the Inflatables. People loved them. The Steve DeAngelis Community Fund partnered with me to make a whole kids' zone. And the volleyball court and that whole, the Gaga pit area had kids' games and volunteers. There were prizes to win and the kids had a blast. The first time the Fairgrounds had a food table, the Lions Club didn't do it this year, so we had our Fairgrounds. People step up and Greg Gladbeck stood behind the grill along with Matt Magnuson all day. Our food sold out. We went by the Lions Club recommendations of what they usually buy, and we sold out with two hours left. And so next year, we, we need more cheeseburgers and hot dogs. We had about 45 cheeseburgers and 50 hot dog meals, and we should have bought more. It was awesome. The band that came from six to eight on Saturday, we had about 60 people. And it was, it was a slow start, but by the end of it, we had about 60 people, and it was awesome. And I looked around and I did get a little teary-eyed because it was the vision that I wanted where, I don't know, the, the weather was cooling down. And I looked around and there was kids playing soccer, and there were people sitting down, and there were people dancing. And I thought it was an absolute blast, and I thought that the band played really, really great. The Methodist Church service on Sunday morning was a brand new addition. It was about 45 people. It's more than their average attendance for their weekly services, so they were really thrilled. And it was, it was a really nice addition. The weather worked out all weekend long. And so that helped, but, but it was really beautiful. And the flowers that I planted made it even prettier. Our cornhole tournament was a brand new addition on Sunday at 1 o'clock. It was blistering hot, and we still had 14 teams that played. The kids and the adults had an absolute.
Um, the kids and the adults had an absolute blast. We had an ice cream truck come. Um, she loves coming to our beach and she always does really well. Um, and everyone had a really great time. I kept offering breaks for people to cool down and they just wanted to keep going. And so, I, I think it was a success. The puppet show was brand-new for Heritage Days and that was a huge turnout and a big hit. A hundred and sixty people, like Melissa said, and, and I think we need to bring them back every year, because they are really awesome. I hope they have enough programs to keep us going for a long time. Um, our outdoor movie, we had fifty-plus people. We played Hook. Another, I think, great success and I would love to continue doing annually, because we, we had a ton of people and it was so pretty. We strung lights all up for sock hop and then we got double use out of them for the outdoor movie. Um, now I just have a ton of cleanup and putting back of all the parts. I have a couple sheds that are full of things right now that I have to get all back to their respective homes. Um, that's kind of all I have for Heritage Days. Do you want to ask any questions or talk about Heritage Days before I move on to other programming? No?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks again, Jen. I mean, uh, the, the diversity of programming, the creativity, the way it was all put together. Uh, thanks to you, thanks to Dom.
Yeah.
And all the volunteers that were there, but I mean, uh, it was like, I went to a lot of the events, um, and, and it, it was always, you know, people there, they were there because they wanted to help, but they were there because of you, uh, and the, the connection that you brought. So, it was fantastic to see that and that is very well done. Um, I liked the diversity of, of, of activities. I mean, uh, everything from the puppet show up to, uh, classical, uh, you know, Baroque chamber music at the Union Meeting House. That was really cool. I, you know, the sounds coming off stringed instruments in that building, it's impressive. Um, and that was, you know, part of it, too. So that all these things came together and, uh, it, you know, really was a community event. There wasn't anybody that didn't have an opportunity to, to do something, um, that they could enjoy. So I, I was just really impressed. I've been doing this, um, you know, participating in these for a decade now. Um, and, uh, and it was one of the best, so thank you.
Thank you. He said, "Thank you," to my husband and my kids. I joke, so everyone gives me a lot of credit and I do, I do work my butt off a lot, but my husband and kids, I have four kids and one very strong husband and I put them to work. And so people give me a lot of the credit for their hands of what they've done. I'll take it.
I'd like to add that I, I spoke to you about this when, before the meeting started, um, but I think with the success of the puppet show, I'd like to have us consider putting that in the annual budget, so that if the library doesn't have someone donate it, it's something that we can count on doing, because that's a lot of people for the, the little tiny people to have something to do. And that was really focused for them and I think we need to include that annually. And if someone wants to donate it, that's great, but, um, I, I think that would be really wise.
Yeah.
And I, I agree with you on the, the tax insert. I could have one person say, "Oh, so I opened my tax bill and it was six hundred dollars more. Oh, but I can come and listen to a free concert." There was just that little bit. Um, but I, I really think it, with all the wonderful posters that you made and, and what I saw on Facebook, I think we need to get more of that out in print and posted around in various communities, um. Like Elaine was saying, people from Fayette and Manchester and Mount Vernon do come to things in Reed Field and that just makes it more successful. And so, you know, if a month ahead of time, we could get those printed things out. You couldn't do it this year, you're doing everything. So, next year, when you're recreating, instead of just doing it, I, you know, I'd be willing to help take things around and, and put them off.
Thank you.
Great, Jen.
Thank you.
You've got a question behind you.
Well, just two quick things. One, the puppets, if they come, they can come every year, but they can't come on Heritage Days every year. It's every other year because of the big puppet festival they have every other year in Canada.
Oh.
So just, just putting that out there. But two, I was really happy, um, that Jen was at the puppet show and I got a few minutes at the beginning and I great, had people raise hands to see who had had two different Heritage Days events and many people had. Um, so we all, she got two rounds of applause, which was really wonderful, because she so deserves it and we had a lot of people right there together and so it was a great, um, I, I just was very happy.
First time that's ever happened to me.
And it's happy we had a chance, like, as a group to thank you, so.
Yeah.
For all of you.
Well, thank you. Thanks.
And it was nice that you had mentioned about, um, Kentsel School, but they gave you the signs for directing people to the parking lots. They, they set the chairs up, I assume?
They did.
They set the chairs up. They need a little bit more cooling going on inside, but, um, but really well done on, and we need to get them a thank you note.
We, yeah, they, they, we have been working with the head of county, the teen outcomes director of operations and they've been having a seven-day thanks, so.
What else?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, Kentsel School is also going to host us for our Skills and Drills this year for soccer. We always have a day, it's kind of just an exciting day for the kids to warm up and, and be excited for the season. And, um, the middle school was booked this year with a soccer tournament and so Kentsel opened their arms and we're going to do it there this year. And they're, they're very happy to host us. They hosted us for a bunch of baseball and softball practices this year, too, for free. And, yeah, we just love them, they're awesome. Um, so, programming that's happened since I've been here, baseball wrapped up and it was extended to include more travel teams than ever. We had our first softball All-Star team and it was an eight U team and they were absolutely thrilled to have that next level of play. It's kind of always a boys' team kind of thing and they get a lot of attention. So it was really, really nice to see some young girls step up and get that chance. Um, some weekly events that we've done with REC, we've had, uh, weekly wiffle ball on Wednesdays, kickball Sundays, we've had a run club on Monday mornings. That one's been our most successful with always about ten to, ten to eighteen kids that go for a run along the trails at the Church Road Fairgrounds. Um, we also have our radio club we were doing on Tuesday nights. Last week was our last one. Um, the kids love that programming. It's really fun for them to hear themselves on air. We did poetry readings for Shel Silverstein Saturdays and so we have about fifteen different poems that they have read that we're going to do on Saturdays. Uh, we recorded a play that I borrowed from Dennis Price. Uh, the kids have a ton of big plans for the future, including a main show game show that we host to have at the beach, um, with trivia questions for kids and adults. Um, the beach, we have, we are wrapping up swim lessons in about two weeks. We had twenty-five kids per, well, twenty-five kids total. Um, we have, yeah, two weeks left. That's went really well. People love that they were offered and I, I've only heard great things about that. We had our Family Fun Carnival with Melissa a couple of weeks ago and that went amazing. We definitely need to repeat that. Um, and it also gives us another chance to use our Inflatables, which is nice. Um, our Bingo Night at the library, the kids really loved that. Um, it was kind of nice to get out of the heat and go into the library for an evening. Um, looking forward, soccer starts soon. The signups closed last week. Uh, we'll have our Skills and Drills on the twenty-third of this month and then we will start reading with Saturday games. Our Halloween Spooktacular planning has already started with REC and we are looking at additions to the holiday. We want to do a costume five K, one for kids and adults. And so, that planning has started. Um, age-friendly needs a lot of attention for the fall and so, Community Cafe needs a little bit of restructure, restructuring. At first, we were working with Dan Holman and he's invaluable, but he is now retired, but he said he would help us if we really needed him. Um, Rick Saroyes was really happy to take that work on and he was going to work hand-in-hand with me, um, getting the teachers on a, a weekly schedule to get their kids involved in Community Cafe, but now everything's kind of up in the air. And so I hope that, I hope that they have time now to still give Community Cafe attention, because it really needs it and the people that attend it every week really, really love it. And I think it would be, it would be a loss to their social circle if they don't have that anymore. I think it's important. Um, we want to do a volunteer fair in October and it will be a chance for committees and clubs to come together to the community. I know Elaine said she didn't want entertainment, but I think we need something to spice up the day a little bit. So I think we need a little bit of entertainment, like some games or something for the kids. Um, because I really would like to highlight all the things that the town, um, has for services. I think people sometimes just aren't aware of ways that they can be involved or ways that they can help or even ways that, um, they can help a neighbor with the services that we offer here. Um, and I think that's it. There's probably more that I'm just too tired to remember right now. But, any questions?
Seems thorough to me.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, sure.
All right.
You having a radio report out or are we good on that?
We will and we've also got, got Lee. He's been busy today, but, um, I did invite him to maybe introduce himself in his different role as, as, uh, ACO, um, to, to talk about that a little bit.
That's not on the agenda, but let's do it.
We're not bad on time.
Yeah.
We're okay.
Hi.
Hi.
As, as Eric said, I know last week, he told you that the, uh, made my dream come true was being the new Reed Field ACO, so. We're working on that. I just got all the stuff back from the state, so I'll be taking all the courses here in the next couple of weeks. Common sense has served me pretty well so far.
In what respect?
As far as handling dog bites and, you know, that was less than two weeks into it, I had a dog bite happen, so. But I had plenty of resources with Anna. I can talk to her and Taylor Stevenson used to be an ACO and Wayne, so it's plenty of, plenty of information out there.
Well, it seemed to me that you had a lot of experience in dealing with crisis situations and, um, consoling people in a professional way with your role as fire chief. So, it just seemed very natural that this would work out well for everybody. So, we're, I, I'm thankful that you took the job on. I assume we all are.
I think it'll work out well so far. I mean, I've had good luck as being the firewood and for the state firewood in Reed Field. I'm just bringing what I do in that line to the ACO side, so.
So the, um, the email and phone number for the ACO are still the same? So we haven't changed that, um, and we still have all the information on the town website. Um, so I think it's one of those under, uh, kind of often has overlooked community services. Uh, but it's really important when you need it, just, just like the other roles that Lee fills. Uh, but I just wanted to highlight that a little bit, I have to, so.
Can I ask a brief question about your other role? Eric told it, you didn't say no. Um, Eric told us that you guys are working on, on possibly, um, doing something with the Andrew Scoggan call center.
We've sent a request to see if they're interested in it and we're gonna, I think the thought now was, you know, we'll see where they're at and if they're not interested, I mean, there's other dispatch centers where we can continue to ask.
That's great. Really, I think that's a huge community service issue for everybody, so. It's awesome that you guys are looking at it that way.
And as Eric said last time, we've been talking with more staff for the ambulance contract and we're waiting for some information back on that.
And that would be going instead of with Winthrop Ambulance?
Instead of with Winthrop Ambulance and trying to get an, uh, ambulance back staging in Reed Field, which they're very excited to put an ambulance down here. They seem, the director seemed very interested in being able to do that, so.
And would they also be servicing the towns farther out?
That's what we're hoping. We're hoping it would be Mount Vernon, Fayette and Wayne, as well as us, buying or already uses North Star, so.
Because that really helps the other towns if they're in Reed Field and not on the other side of Winthrop in terms of response time.
Yeah.
So, great work, you two. Thank you.
Well, Eric, I think, um, next quarter, when we bring back community service reports, you should just throw Lee's name in there as well, just to keep this going.
I thought it was on the agenda, I'm sorry, Sean.
No, I'm, I'm being serious, though. I do think we should add it, add it. But I'd worry in Mount Vernon if I was going to get back in time. If I weren't on the agenda, nobody'd ever know, except Eric. Uh, on another note, just because I know you guys are curious and we spent, you know, like eight hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer money for a truck we paid for two years ago. Now, uh, they gave us a twenty-eight month lead time in July when we ordered it and they're not going to make their twenty-eight month lead time. I talked to Greenwood, who we bought it through and they said, "Probably we're not going to see it until after the first of the year."
So is that six months late?
It's going to be, they had until Nov- November was the twenty-eight month, so you got December, January. It's going to be a couple of months late if it shows up, but there's everything that's going on in the world right now. I, I guess everybody has lack of employees, even in Florida, where they build that, uh, freight, freight liner was behind on delivering stuff, so it's more than likely probably going to be a twenty-twenty-six chassis. So that, that's a good thing, but.
And we're in good shape until it arrives?
Hundred percent. And I think we did paying for it upfront, I think, was the right move, especially, you know, usually hindsight's twenty-twenty, but luckily, we, we paid for it and that's definitely a bonus for us right now. Because materials and labor costs have gone way out.
It's easier to hold the weight when you've already paid for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got their money, so they're probably not in any rush.
Well, two months isn't bad on a twenty-eight month schedule. I mean, that's not even ten percent late, so.
It just, you know, the guys would like to see it. I, I was kind of hoping to see it, you know, in September, October, because the last one we got, we got in December and that December happened to be one of the coldest Decembers we'd ever had. So you got new apparatus, you're going to train people on your training when it's ten degrees out. It's open up, but just deal with it.
Well, thanks, Lee.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? While I'm here?
You're free.
We had, we had a good turnout at our barbecue for Heritage Days. So that was always good. We served. We just about ran out of food and we had probably a hundred and fifty hamburgers and we almost ran out of those, so. That was, there was a lot of people around. It was a good turnout for Heritage.
Well, thanks, Lee, as always.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Okay, we have board committee commissions and departments. Are you here for that, Greg? Are you here for public comment or?
I do want to drag Bill after him, too, for the Reed Field Radio.
Okay. Uh, Greg Durigan, Reed Field, Route forty-one. Um, just a couple of things quickly, um, hard to follow, Lee. You're a hard man to follow, Lee. Those noises going off were not me, they were him. Well, my stomach was growling, but that wasn't the noise, anyway. Um, I would have been here early, but Melissa keeps me chained to the desk at the library until seven. She did sneak out, I see that. Um, just a couple of things quickly. Uh, I want, I wish Jen hadn't left. I wanted to say what an unbelievable Heritage Day she did. Um, she and her band of merry men and women and little ones and it was amazing. It was just so good. Um, the food pantry was the benefit of, uh, almost three hundred dollars in the fifty-fifty. Um, the Masons have adopted us about three years ago, so we'll get, um, their profits from the breakfast, um, after their bills are paid. And then the national, um, organization, the Masons, uh, they matched the Reed Field one. So last year, our take, if you will, for the pantry was four thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
That, that comes in handy.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention was, uh, Friday night at the, um, our Reed Field Historical Society meeting, we were, um, pleased to honor, um, a Reed Field resident who has donated, committed herself to hours and hours of, um, good stuff here in town. And, um, that recipient this year was Catherine Whitson. So, yeah. Nice job, Catherine. So, thank you for all you do for the town.
It was quite the surprise after I'd been joshing around with you. You told me later, "Yeah, you're just going to get yours back in about four minutes, baby."
I've never forgiven you for kicking me under the table at my first select board meeting, sitting right there. Something about cats and I said something that I really believed in and I got thumped under the.
I never got swatted back.
That was a lot of years ago, but I still have the blues. The other thing about Heritage Days was, uh, I never want to see Eric Hula Hoop again. That vision will stay with me forever, but, but you were there a lot of times, so thank you. And, uh, I think the last thing I wanted to say was, I want to thank Angelica. She is so polite and wonderful every time she takes my check when I pay my taxes. Thank you for letting me speak out of turn.
Thanks, Greg. Bill? Bill, can you come out here, please?
Well, as long as, well, I'll give a quick update to you on some of the things that Kevin Keller has been working on, and just say that Kevin and Bill and Jen have been working together as a team to really move this thing forward, so. The station's up and operational, the automation systems are getting in place for the software, for the playlists. Kevin's working on new programming, Bill's doing a ton of work behind the scenes with all the equipment and technology. And we're working on station promotions and station IDs, so what we're looking for with those is we want people from town, including maybe some select board members, to just come in at some point and record a little 10-second promotion or station ID, you know, and that way people can hear you out there, just like you heard me. That could be your voice. Yeah, out there on the radio. But anyway, the programming side is really Kevin's, kind of, he's been focusing on that along with Jen, and then Bill's been doing a lot of the technical work. But I'll let Bill talk about what he's been doing.
Sure. Hi, for the benefit of the audience, I'm Bill Sterrett, and I'm the Reed Field Governmental TV Station Manager. Been doing that for over 10 years now. And I also serve as the volunteer for the radio station engineer, so I did the physical building of it. So it's up and running. In fact, Eric had mentioned it, but we're simulcasting right now to radio, Zoom, YouTube, and we're still providing a signal to Channel 7 on their cable channel. So I prepared, prepared some talking points. I thought we'd review for the board how we actually got here with the radio. This whole thing was Eric's brainchild. He deserves a great deal of credit for applying for the license. I looked at what it takes to do that, and it's way over my head, so. It's just amazing, and actually Jen and Kevin, we came together and this thing whole, thing pulled together really quick, but it took a long time, and Eric's the one that did that. So in regards to the license that he had to apply for, the board ought to be aware of our FCC constraints and obligations. So we are restricted to 100 watts, we're on 94.5, and we have to broadcast 24/7. So as Eric mentioned, Kevin is helping with that. The antenna height, we'll talk some physical things now, we're limited to 59 feet, and we have a tripod and a mast on the top of the building. So the building to the peak is, we think, 40 feet, and we add another eight feet to that, so we're between 48, 50 feet high, and we could go another eight feet, more or less, but that would require some guy wires, and we don't want to get into guy wires, really. We'd rather put a effort into streaming, so people could pick it up on the internet. And Kevin says we can do it, so.
That's amazing.
We will.
We're just little teeny Reed Field in Central Maine, and we have all these awesome things going.
Oh, it's just fascinating. I love it. Another obligation is we have to participate with the emergency alert system. Every broadcast station in the country has to participate in a particular way, and there's four ways that we do that. One is to monitor two nearby stations. We happen to, the best station I get is 96.3 in Gray, and I'm also monitoring NOAA Weather Radio out of Dresden. So also, we have to have random weekly tests. That's a requirement. We have to relay any emergency that comes across on the airwaves, and we have to log those emergency messages. Unfortunately, we bought a brand-new box that does all of it for us.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, so as far as the board needs to know, we are compliant. So as far as building it, drawing upon our psych business, Sir Rockland in Belfast, we had an idea of what kind of equipment to look for and buy. So with some research, we found a refurbished transmitter, $1,000 off a new one. So we, we would divert some funds to other things. So we've got a nice new base level audio mixer. Of course, the new, the digital alert system, and fortunately, I had a bunch of stuff donated when I was still with UMA, so we had a 19-inch equipment rack, audio, stuff, and meters. So it was quick. It came together quick, and with Jen's help, we're gonna do great things.
It's great. I love it.
That's just amazing.
Yeah. If those of you that don't know who Kevin is, Kevin's a short gentleman. And he is now walking around with an old radio, so he can check it all the time.
And just to Bill's credit, the coverage, the coverage that we're getting is pretty exceptional, and there's not much of Reed Field that isn't in the shadow of a pretty big hill that we can't get.
You can get it at your house.
I mean, it's all over, but I haven't found any place really outside of the very far side of Kent Hill, as you're getting down towards Fayette, right there at the line, we have issues, but.
So when I turn off the fog road onto the Sady Dunn Road,
Yeah.
it switches to KES FM, but once I'm back to my house, it's back to Reed Field.
Okay, all right, so there's a little pocket.
So it's just like a small piece there, but, yeah.
But as far as emergency services component goes, which Bill was talking about, and it's one of the reasons we started it, it, we got very good coverage. I'd say we're probably 90% of the town. It was a good, strong signal, so, yeah.
Is one of the things that your committee has thought about or considered how to widely publicize to Reed Field residents? That aspect of this, so when we have a huge flooding event and roads wash out and trees are down, which happened a couple of years ago, they'll know that there's a radio station to tune to for that. Because it's really hard for us to get the right information out to people. If they're not listening to the radio station, then they won't know that they can. So.
Well, hindsight's 2020. As far as Heritage Days, had we been running and a little more experience, we could have had a booth at Heritage Jays, and people come by and we'll give them a pamphlet or something about the radio, so, but we could do that in the future. We just turned it on this week.
I know, I know. That's why I said, you know, thinking about it, but Eric, that's something that we, as a select board, could say, you know, let's get this, like, in the newsletter every month, for instance, you know, if a storm comes about, tune into.
Yeah, we'll be doing all that kind of promotion, and I do think that at some point we'll probably do a mailing. We did have a little, a little you know, piece in with the tax bill, but it wasn't terribly noticeable, but we'll be working with age-friendly in the library, I hope, to maybe, to get more penetration into the community through those, you know, channels that we have available for the people that might need it most. Because some of the biggest challenges we had during the last storm were people trying to go pick their kids up. So it wasn't just the old folks that were having challenges, it was, it was people driving around trying to get their kids, and that was a big issue, I guess, for them and for the public safety personnel, so.
We could create something kind of permanent on the, maybe the fire department sign, just like the station number or something.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
We have letters.
But, yeah, so anyway, I just want to thank Bill again, because he's been a huge, huge part of this, and, you know, the team is great, and we're always looking for extra, but we've got a great core group.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah. And for those of you that don't know, Bill is the man behind the curtain of all of these meetings.
Man of many talents.
The wizard of awe.
Yeah.
He is the unseen face of the select board meetings.
It kind of sounds like maybe you've been traveling.
Yes, I have, yeah.
Angelica and I are winking at each other, so keep it up.
I've tried to, like, dub it there just a wee bit for the meeting, so, but that, it's not, I don't think it's working. Public communication, does any member of the public? Nope? Okay, I hope you're all enjoying this on radio. We have meeting minutes from the symmetry committee, open space working group, and the planning board. Thank you very much for getting those to us. We appreciate having those on time. We are now at appointments, reappointments, and resignations, so really we're looking at appointing our union contract negotiation team. Eric, I see that you posted the official request for bargaining in our packet.
Yeah, and that's just for a frame of reference to indicate that we are in an official process here, but unofficially, or at least more formally, it's always important and necessary, I think, to have select board involvement when we're doing these negotiations, because you folks have to approve this. And so this is a very important liaison-type role, and in the past, we've had one or two board members participate. I will say that relationships with the union have improved. I think we're doing a lot better than we were in the past. We've been able to find some common ground on a few different things, and I just expect that to continue. I think that we'll be, you know, talking about wages and talking about maybe doing some increases that are not just across the board, because we do recognize that not everybody is, you know, or not all the positions are escalating at the same pace, and there are a few nuances, you know, regionally with, you know, different positions that we want to acknowledge. So all that said, I think we're in a good position. We've got a good understanding of the current contract. We've got a good understanding of the relationship we have with the ASB 93, and the folks that are gonna be involved on the other side of the table, which, you know, it, again, it always sounds worse than it is, you know, these are people that we, I work with every day, and so they're very interested, as am I, as the board has been in the past recently, in trying to have a positive working relationship and just maintaining that and making sure everything's above board positive, and and that we can do the best we can for everybody involved. So that's my pitch, and then I hope one or two of you will be interested in joining with me in that negotiation effort.
Well, I can say that I'm interested. I, I don't know how people are excited about union contract work stuff, but I'm interested.
You have a lot of good knowledge from your professional life that I think really helps.
I'd be interested, but I don't know, I'm qualified, so if Sean was willing to do it with me.
I have not.
I did it last year. Well, it was.
It was an intermediary, intermediate
Yep.
negotiation for wages only.
I'm fine with Jaren and Sean doing it.
Good with you, Eric?
Good. Hey, it's your vote.
Someone make a motion.
I'll take any of you.
Do we need to actually appoint someone to do it?
Yes.
I'd appreciate it, yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sean and Jaren to be the negotiators for the union contract from the select board.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Should we just put Rebecca in, because she's not here? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Do we have to sign something, Eric, or?
No, no, it's just, so when we do things like tenant of agreements, that type of stuff, we can have a formal backing behind that.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, old business, 2309, discuss harbor and mooring considerations in the town of Reed Field. I know this has been a hot topic, and.
It, it's had some more attention lately with, like, one or two more moorings in Reed Field, and then the kind of outcome of what happened in Winthrop. This is really on the agenda more to just do a litmus test with the board, particularly following the summer residents meeting to see if we have any interest in, in walking down this road. I'll say that I'm not interested, but I wanted to bring it up for a public discussion, or at least one with the board, to start to see where people fall on that.
Well, I think as we, we've talked about this and what it takes to, with having a harbor master, all the mess that you get into, it would be nice if it kind of self-corrected and didn't have to go there. So, yeah, I agree, Eric, I'd rather not get into it if we can avoid it.
If we, if we have any extra money in this town for wages, I would rather make Jen Worthing a full-time employee than consider a harbor master, or a stipend for one, so.
I mean, the lakes are owned and regulated by the state, right?
They're not ours.
They're, they're regulated by the state. They're not ours, and it's not like there are 45 moorings in a congested area that are causing an issue, so.
Well, and I think that's what the problem would become if, if it got to that.
Yeah, because then you would have opportunities to moor.
Right, so, yeah.
Yeah, I lived in coastal community for at least a decade, and I, I don't see the need for us to go down that path at this time.
There you go.
Thank you, Eric, for bringing this back up to our attention. New business, we have a couple of minutes left here, 26014, consider updates to the transfer station interlocal agreement and SWRC charter. Catherine?
So the Solid Waste Committee considered this over the past year at, I think, three different meetings, and now it's been sent to the three select boards, Wayne, Fayette, and Reed Field for approval. Basically, we cleaned up some language, and we made it so that we only need two members, one from the select board and one from the community at large on each, from each town. There's just not that much to do, and it's very hard for the towns to get enough people to do that. So that's really all it is, and all the changes are redlined right in the packet. Did I cover it all, Eric?
It does. I also just want to say thanks to you for pursuing this and keeping it in the, in the foreground, because it did need to happen, and Catherine, I mean, you've just done great work with, with the Solid Waste Committee in general, keeping that thing going and being a functional, a functional town committee and multiple town committee, despite the challenges, so I think it's been, it's been a good. I appreciate your involvement, and I think that these changes are entirely appropriate. Wayne did adopt them with a caveat. They were a little bit confused about the adoption process versus the amendment process, but they, they actually did adopt it, and so we're all set with Wayne, and it would just be us at Fayette, so.
And Fayette, Mark Robinson said he was scheduling it with the select board in August. So I would make a motion to approve the updates as presented in the packet to the transfer station interlocal agreement and the charter.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Wow, we are on time, and I would just say, though, that was a really fun meeting to listen to, what great things are happening in town, like, whether or not there was not a thing that was, you know, not joyful to hear, so thank you to all the folks that presented on what they've been working on, and we're really grateful for what you are doing. Any further discussion, meeting discussion items? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Catherine, you can just complete your discussion with Eric.